Welcome back to our morning meeting for January 13th. Our next up is Buildings and Grounds, Scott Klingon.
Former Commissioners, where we want to start at? I know we had a bill from Irish Builders last Monday. And I think you're curious if there's going to be any more fees for the concession than there will be. Right now, they bid 150,000 with utilities. Right now, they're actually at 131. They're doing pretty good. But we are about out of fees. If my calculations are correct, they have to do, they bill out, they haven't installed the stalls yet in the bathrooms. So, you know, these are the money for those materials and installation. And they put up a roll-up door for the concession stand they haven't billed for yet. And then today, we got a bill for the city for our sewer and water, which, you know, I'm familiar with the hookup fees, but they have a service availability fee, which when you add that off, it's almost $10,000 they charge us to hook up to the sewer and water down there. I've never heard of a service.
Have we already hooked up?
No, we had to do tie-ins for the water in the sewer.
And they charge us for them?
Well, that's normal. Generally, there's a hookup fee, you know, and, but I've never heard of a service availability fee. And that's where most of it came in at and stuff.
So we're adding an additional service since the existing bathrooms are still there?
What's that?
We're adding an additional service since the existing bathrooms are still in use?
Yeah. Because we, yeah, because we did a water tie-in and a sewer tie-in.
Will be there tonight. Might ask what that's about.
Yeah, like I said, I talked to Brandy. She said she'd send me a breakdown because I've never heard of a service availability fee. I've always, you know, we've always had sewer and water hookup fees. And some are pretty substantial, like in the city of Boise and stuff. You know, up here, you know, it was $760 to hook up the sewer. Water was 2640, which is kind of backwards. Sewers generally are being hooked up. But yeah, there's $4,800 in sewer availability fee and 1693 for the water. So that's kind of, like I said, and she says she's going to send me a breakdown on that. So that's kind of where we're at right there with that. Then with our project up at the transfer site, we're going to put the notification in for bid on the 27th of January. Is what it'll be. And it'll run to the 21st of February. And then with a bid opening on the 24th of February up there. And then we're going to have on the February 20th or 11th, we'll have a meeting up there with all contractors that have submitted bids or want to do walkthrough and look at the project onsite. Great West is going to handle providing the bid forms and information. And we'll make a bidder's list is what they'll do. The bids will be delivered here to the clerk's office. They'll have to be in by the 21st by 5:00 PM. Kind of moving forward with that. We still have some things we've got to work out, possibly DEQ and Central District Health. Because we're looking up on the site up by where the C and D and metal is creating a pad up there, an asphalt pad with the eco blocks around it as a temporary unloading for the public and loading area for Lake Shore. So we, because the building's going to have to go down for possibly six to eight weeks. Because to do the floor, they're going to pour 10-foot-high retaining armored walls along the sides. And then put in a new scale and a drainage pit down there is what the plan is far as the building. We're going to have a Z-Wall construction out there, relocation of the fire suppression tank up there and stuff on the east side of things.
Does Scott, that road going up to the upper, you guys got plans on upgrading that to be able to handle all that big truck traffic going up and down that road? It sure gets beat up.
Yeah, that's what my, we had a Zoom in last week. And that's something I did bring up, we'd have to do some road improvement for the traffic going up and down up there. And something we'll probably have to look at this year is possibly grinding twice this year. Because the volume we're getting, we're, one, to just keep room. Because we're going to take up some of the room for the, for the loading and unloading up there. And plus, we're, we're running out of space by the end of the year with the rate of development and the large volumes of woody debris coming in.
Do we have, do we have a second option that if it gets too, you know, convoluted up on top, we can use the Lake Fork spot?
No, Lake Fork, we'd have to hire another attendant, someone down there to watch and manage it and weigh it and stuff. We don't have scales set up down there. I mean, it's something we need to kind of probably look at in the five-year plan for solid waste. You know, what we're going to do with the woody debris and where we're going to grow. We've outgrown the spot up there.
We'd have to change our CUP.
You know.
I'm talking about, I'm just talking about woody debris. I'm not talking about anything else. That seems to be the biggest one that fills up up there.
It is. I mean, it takes the biggest, you know, it takes the largest amount of space, but, you know.
So Scott, where are we at right now? I mean, do we need to burn it once? I know the community won't be all that happy with that. But if we need to burn it to get it to the point where we could utilize it this summer, we may have to do that.
I don't know if we can burn it while we're actually using it up there. I mean, that would be, we may grind the first half and then burn the second. The only thing about the burn is it'd be such a mess up there, you know, to come back to. One of the things we want to look at is with us wanting to, you know, do a temporary pad up there is we still need to haul off some of the debris and stuff that was left over, you know, from our initial grinding, stuff they couldn't grind that got, you know, pushed up. We have some piles up there I'd like to see get hauled off. They've kind of created a berm kind of on the south end of the woody debris between that and C and D. I'd like to see that. I'd just like to see the whole area flat up there. And these piles of debris that can't be, you know, taken to tamarack. It just needs to be hauled off. If it's something we need to look at, one of the escalator contractors up here that have the 40-foot dump beds that can haul up the clay peak for us and just get rid of it and get that whole site leveled. Get all the miscellaneous piles of debris gone.
And Lake Shore won't take those?
Well, they don't really, it's not something they can really load in their, in their trucks. You know, they don't have a loader that's capable of dumping in those. That was one of the things that Timber Creek had. They had a big cat loader with a special bucket on it that could reach over the live floors.
Why don't you get us a bid from somebody and let us know what it would cost to do that?
Yeah.
Is there any way that we can use some of that to expand the pad? I mean, dump it over the side and, you know, do some backfill with some dirt to make it larger up there?
Oh, we could, because that's kind of what they've been doing with like the stumps and stuff. It's kind of pushing them over that east end or into the draw down there. You know, without knowing exactly where our property line runs up there. I don't know how far we can push that out and how, you know, feasible that is. My understanding that where the woody debris is, is an old landfill. You know, I haven't been here long enough. I don't know if that was actually a landfill at one time up there, but it's told it is, so it's.
They told that too?
Yeah, I really don't know the history up there of it.
Probably get it actually staked so we know where our property line is.
Have it surveyed and find out. There's a single barbed wire that kind of runs back there on the east side of there. And I've been told that's the property line and we're pretty much to it and stuff.
Why don't you get us a bid on what it would take to clean it up? And then also, you may want to put, consider putting in your budget this next year. Have the thing surveyed so we actually know where our property boundaries are.
Yeah, because with, with the improvements we're doing to the building and the Z-Wall, you know, they're kind of projecting that's, you know, hold us over for about another five years and then.
And we've got to have a long-term solution. Ken Holland and I are supposed to have a conversation this week. So I put out there that USDA grant is open again through the Forest Service for a grinder. And I'm asking him if they would like to do something collaboratively and purchase a grinder with one of those. And, you know, some of that ourselves. And if you end up going with something along them, then we'll kind of know how that meeting goes.
Yeah, when Ken and I spoke with the people from Blaine County and their recycle down there, it was interesting. They, they do not use a contractor. They run their own recycling center themselves. And that's the thing that we think we need to do is run it ourselves. And look at, you know, we improved the collection process. Now we need to go in the direction of our processing. And one of the things they tell us, they process it themselves, then they market it to themselves also. And what they're looking for is to increase their storage. Because about 80% of theirs is cardboard. And what they do is they can store the cardboard and watch the market. Market's low, they just sit on their cardboard. And then when the market goes up, then they market it. They also use Pacific Steel, actually brings them bins. They put aluminum and tin in them. And then Pacific comes, picks them up, brings them empties, you know, instead of having to bale the aluminum. And they just haul the tin cans up and put them on the pile up there. And then they get crushed up when Pacific comes and does the pile and stuff. So I think it's something.
Sounds like you need to resolve all of that before September.
Before September. And.
He's retiring.
So it's, you know, it's something in the contract, you know? I mean, it'll take a, we need really, and that's what talking, when Ken and I were talking with, is there is a lot of grant money out there. Scarf, and he actually sent us what they have applied for. Part of it is from the Recession Act from the Biden administration, which runs through 32. But I think soon, Trump is there, he's going to shut it down. So I don't know if that grant money is going to be available. We'll see what's out there. But it sounds like, you know, if we want to, you know, build a building and improve our processing, that there should be a lot of money out there for it and stuff.
You know, we've got, right behind us, Scott, you may want to look at one of the county maps. That property boundary, the Davis family that we actually bought that from so many years ago, owns the lot right in back of us. So, I mean, it might be, Valley County actually owned that for a while. That's interesting. Why in the world would we have sold off ground right behind? It's always the worst thing. There's 31 acres back there, right up on that top of that pad.
That flat that goes back east there, yeah.
So if that could be something for an expansion.
He'd buy a ball on it up there. I'd like to have it. But yeah, because if we're going to, I mean, I, like I said, with the gentleman you're talking with, I don't know what their process, what type of land requirement it's going to take, you know? If we want to add, look at incinerating and generating power, you know, what direction we want to go. But we've got to get some space somewhere.
And it's almost landlocked, so it's, I mean, I don't know how you would even access that without coming through the site. So interesting.
And we'll look at jail, we need to really look at replacing the washers or at least replacing one set. The thing is, I've looked at like the Speed Queen, the large Speed Queens. And then there's another company out there that basically we need to look at along the line of equipment that they use in a hospital nursing home or some heavy-duty equipment.
Is this in your budget?
Well, that comes out of their budget. I mean, they have their capital budget. And they kind of need to see if, you know, we need to talk with them ahead of time or work when we come to capital improvement. Because a set of those heavy-duty ones runs $16,000 to $25,000. And also, we have to look at if we go to those bigger ones, they have a bigger dryer outlet. And I don't want to be choking it down because then you lose your efficiency. Because they do them in pounds. They don't do it in a number of uniforms. They do like them in 30 and 50-pound loads. And.
If this has to be done now, then it would have to come out of an emergency fund, so.
Well, I don't know if they have any plan for their capital, you know? You know, I mean, we could, and we have to look at what a, you know, what a 50-pound washer dryer combination do, you know?
Why don't you talk to them? And see what their plan is, when they have to have it, and then do.
Well, they've already sent me an email. They need to do something because we're constantly working on them and flooding them.
Why don't you bring a proposal then and get it on an agenda? We've discussed it a few times, so let's just bring us a proposal, put it on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, because I tried to, actually I was talking to the owners of the laundromat because they have the big Speed Queens down there. It doesn't seem, it kind of has to come out of Salt Lake for Speed Queen. And then there's another company, they have a rep here in Boise that make really nice, heavy-duty equipment. And their, theirs run, like I say, when I talked to him, $16,000 to $25,000 and stuff, so.
Which is put it on an agenda.
Something we need to look at.
Would the dryer be gas-fired or would it be?
They have gas and they have electric. That's what we've got to look at because we don't have any gas in there. And we'd have to look at how much is consumed by the builder with our, with our boilers and stuff, if we have enough available. Because it runs the boilers and then the hot water, the small hot water boiler that provides the hot water for the jail and stuff, and see if we have the capacity and how much it would cost to, you know, get it run. Because it's a little difficult with the solid poured, you know, ceilings and walls and stuff to do, you know?
Bring a proposal.
Okay.
What else do you have for us?
Your chairs and stuff are all ordered right here and the desk. See, Mike brought the Kredenza in.
Is that their Kredenza or is that the desk?
That's Kredenza.
Oh, interesting, okay.
The desk will be like, you know, if you looked at like the Building Department treasures, it'll be like those without a return on them is what it'll be. It'll just be the desk. Let's see, have a chair like that kind of, another one of those coming. And then I have, because I ordered eight chairs like they have at the Lake Fork Conference Room. So we can put around it and have a couple spares and stuff, you know, for that. So they should be getting here pretty soon.
We're looking at turning over our title here pretty quick, are we?
In February. Glad you brought that up because it's been kind of, I can't get any cooperation. When the leak came, started, we had the leak come back again two weeks ago. Got hold of Matthew. He was supposed to send his disaster guy that he had look at it. No one's ever showed up. I think I kind of have a solution for kind of stopping the water until we can, I think it was something we'd have in conjunction, whatever, if we have to do a French drain around the outside or what we've got to do to stop that river that comes when we have large rainfall. And that's what happened. We had, two Fridays ago, we had large rainfall and it showed back up again.
And I think we're going to have to fix it and just, you know, repair it so that we don't further damage it. And then Brian, I know, is looking at the contract or the lease agreement to see who's responsible for that payment. But I would move forward and.
Yeah, well, that's what he, you saw the email. Yeah, we'll just move forward, I think. Looking at in the corner down there, if we can put a sump pump and catch the water that's there and reduce the amount of water that's getting to the building till we can get to the spring. And when we can, maybe you'd have to have an engineer or something look at and see what we need to do. Because that's a lot of water that ends up under that east side over there of the building for some reason.
We've got to get it stopped, so whatever you got to do. And are you turning over the utilities?
I don't, I don't do that generally.
Yeah, well, we can do that. I have, as you saw, that was on the agenda just to, so we have a clear understanding of what needs to be included. I would ask Scott to come back at 1:30.
Yeah, I saw that on the agenda. That was just one more thing we need to think about. There is no backup generator or anything in that building. So that's something we want to look down the road at putting in there. It has a huge electric boiler. I mean, so if power goes out, there's no heat, no nothing there.
We better be doing that.
I think it's something we need to start looking at there, what the power requirement is to, to put a generator. If it's something we want to incorporate a pad or something when we're doing the parking lots and stuff, clearing an area. So it's accessible and stuff and.
I need to discuss that at the CAP.
Yeah, we want to have backup power there and not, you know.
Maybe you say what, an electric boiler?
What?
She uses an electric boiler, not very efficient.
Well, it's just huge too. I mean, it's got like three conduits that big. I mean, the wires that go to it. I've been, I don't know if we've looked at what the electric bill is there.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Dan, are you up first?
Welcome, Commissioner Colwell. Glad to have you aboard. And my name is Dan Coombes. I'm the engineer, public works engineer, helping out this guy over here, Superintendent Jeff McManus. But wanted to just briefly go through the signing things and then I'll give you an update, if that's okay? First one on the list. This is, okay, so there's lots, lots of going on here on the new building. A couple of things that we want to look at is identifying a location for a sand shed onsite somewhere.
A what, Jeff?
A sand, excuse me, a sand shed. And so in order for us to do that, we need to do some soil investigations. So we're going to hire a consultant to evaluate the capacity of the weight that the sand shed would have in certain spots. And Jeff has identified a couple of locations that would work. We just need to identify it appropriately.
Oh, in conjunction with that, something that you might need to know?
Well, I was going to mention the thing that I think you're going to talk about later because I've got a, I've got a meeting with DEQ later this week in regards to that.
I have one more thing on top of that. So Idaho Power backed out from that purchase. We have another group that is needing an acre. I don't know if you've heard that yet.
Yes, I believe I did hear that. And this is.
And that's for the broadband mountain group?
We'll have to look at the site, see what, see what the.
Keep that in mind if you're looking at sand storage.
Yeah, I assume that would probably be in the same general location where the.
Idaho Power.
Idaho Power would have been. I don't know what their, what their thoughts on in terms of that. So that might be something that we'll have to discuss with them.
I'd think I would make our priority number one. Broadband, yeah, we'll stick you down to firing range, you know? But sand shed works best for our people, for our site. And then if there's anything left over.
That's kind of what I was hoping is that we, we need to get through where we're going to put the sand shed before we can identify a location for them.
And you do, you think of a sand shed kind of like what they got it, just down the road here, just on those tents? Deals with the big blocks you drive.
So it's just a matter of the weight of the sand itself to make sure it doesn't sink into the ground.
You don't have to put, you don't have to put a surface down, do you, to do a sand shed?
No, no, it's just strictly cover, so. So that's essentially what the first agreement is, is to have a consultant to evaluate the soil conditions out there for us. I thought it was a pretty good price for $4,000, so. And this, I think, will fit, will fit our budget, so.
There's some of you can just hire and get it done.
Yeah, so this is actually, we already worked out the specific consultant that we work with periodically on other geotechnical investigations. So I think they do a pretty good job. They did actually do the investigation of the shop itself. So they actually did the soil investigation on the, on the location of the shop.
Done? Shop one done?
The shop is, no. I mean, so in terms of the shop, there's a couple of things in play. So as I indicated earlier, I might as well get into it right now. As I indicated earlier, I have a meeting with DEQ in regards to the environmental investigation that Idaho Power did. I'm trying to confirm what, what we need to do to remedy any contaminants. So I, I still need to do some due diligence there with them to identify that.
Have you heard about that? I think you updated me at the county officials.
But, so we're in the process of, excuse me, I've got a really bad itch in my eye.
One of the things down there is lead for that firing range that's been allowed to occur for the last few years. Somebody told me there hadn't been half a million rounds in the ground there. Maybe that's our leadage.
I'm not sure. It's part of the, the surface water and the groundwater. So it's gotten into the water itself. So we just have to see what we have to do to remedy it.
Have we had the well tested yet?
No, the well, as far as I know, hasn't been tested. But we don't, we don't use it as drinkable. It's only used to wash things. We essentially have the water trucked in with jugs, so.
Well, you should put not potable water on it somewhere. We haven't tested it, just to make sure nobody's utilizing it.
Yeah. And then we're still going through the review of the, you know, the, I'm sorry, the bridge jacks for the structure itself. So we're going to be able to include the actual bridge jacks for that. For the building, so you can raise and lower a vehicle, dump truck or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, bridge crane. I knew I was missing a word there. Thank you, sir, from the audience.
I'd be confused if I was going to. And that's bridge, we're going to slide it in there.
Some bridges, they do that. So, yeah, so this is essentially just getting the locations for the sand shed.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I don't know if you have the.
I make a motion that we sign the professional services and consulting agreement with Atlas Technical Consultants LLC.
$1,000 or $4,140. And you're just going to need to cross out. Just write yours underneath of it and then sign that. It's a move, call second, to approve the Atlas Geotechnical Investigation Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
So the other item that I have is actually, this is a good thing. And it's not money going out.
Back to the microphone.
Sorry.
We love having you up here, but nobody can hear what you want to say.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the next item I have is the Perpetra Resources MOU. As I mentioned, this is a good thing. This is something, money that's not going out, but money coming in. So as part of our several meetings with Perpetra, they have insisted on trying to get some information in regards to Warren Lake Highway, Warren Lake Roads. And primarily, they want to know the traffic counts, you know, potential speeds, that, that kind of thing. And so if you recall last, was it last month? That was approved was the SDK, speed information that is web-based and that everything is done with smart technology. So what Perpetra is wanting to do is get past years of data. So what Perpetua is wanting to do is get past years of data. We essentially went forward with just getting the initial contract with SDK folks. I think it's only like a year and a half worth of data. Well, Perpetua wants the remaining four years of data. So they have asked if they could participate in, in providing funding for it. I think it's a good idea is that we always try to partner with private entities in this way. And I think it's added bonus for them because they'll get the information that they requested. And we can use the data ourselves in the future. So it, it was kind of a no-brainer on, on our part.
So we have those prior years?
Yeah, so, yes. So what will happen is because of the smart technology, they have already accumulated those years. So what would it be? Would it be 19, 20, 21, 22? We've got 23 and part of 24. Yeah, and all of 24. So, so essentially, we'll get back that far to get that data. So I think it's, it's a good thing. I think we'll, we'll be able to use it. We've got, we went through two sessions already with SDK and evaluating their program. I think we've got one here scheduled next week to kind of do a wrap-up on it. So I think we'll, it'll become, it's usable now. We can use speed data. We can evaluate after a project is done. That's a good thing to see what kind of volumes are, are there. And then how it will affect.
They don't, right now, I don't believe they have any contract or anything. Taking care of.
Warm Lake, no, correct. We are in the process of working that out. I think we do have the agreements for.
The Stibnight Road.
Yeah, just this, yeah, just the Stib, I was trying to remember. There is a section that they currently are, are in agreement with us. And that's the Stibnight Road. So they're just working on like whatever is needed there. But we're talking about this whole section on, on Warm Lake, so.
So wasn't there something included in the Forest Service? We asked them to maintain Johnson Creek on their end or.
I think, I think that was part of the.
Through the Forest Service.
That was.
Part of it.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be under the full umbrella of an agreement that you haven't yet seen. And that we still, we still have to go through the bonding aspect of it, that they know that they're, it's coming.
Before we are fully in agreement on that whole thing, I think we need a work session here so that we know what's being proposed and can give input also.
Okay.
It's a large contract for Valley County.
Yeah.
And so I think it would be appropriate that the commissioners have an opportunity to have a little voice in whatever we decide on before we go out to improve it with Perpetua.
That sounds awesome. I think that would be a good idea.
Once you have it, then that would be great.
Okay. Well, we'll get it, we'll get it to a point where it makes kind of sense and then we'll present it to you guys.
The idea that once they get burnt log in operation, they'll no longer use Johnson?
I'm not sure if that's, is that the case, as the plan? Burnt log.
That's the new road they're doing.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. When they construct, yeah, yeah.
And they're not gonna, they'll vacate Johnson Creek, but they'll leave it in good shape.
Yeah. That's the hope, right? That's why we're gonna do an agreement with them and the bond associated with it. So and essentially, that was a roughabout way to talk about it. So before you is this MOU that Prosecutor Attorney has requested that we submit for approval and that we work with Perpetua to receive the funding. I didn't, I didn't want to do anything without transferring the funds, without at least an MOU. So that's why you have that in front of you.
Entertain a motion to approve? I would move that we approve the commissioners to sign the memorandum of understanding with Perpetua Resources. For a second?
Second.
Oh, so moved in seconded? All in favor? Motion passes. Oh. Okay, what else do you have for us?
Okay, let me, one other item I wanted to maybe ask Doug a little bit about. This is on the warranty extension for CAT. I think you, we went through the process of getting it reviewed. And in terms of the signatures, it's not before you as far as I know, but we need to get it signed so that we can have the warranty for the 950.
So it is not on our agenda for an action item?
But I just wanted to find, find out what, where.
Does it have to be signed this week?
No, no.
Okay, so if you put it on the agenda then for next week?
Yeah.
We're done on the 21st?
Okay. Last thing I wanted to, I wanted to talk, I'm sure Jeff may have some items he wants to discuss with you.
I just need about two minutes.
Just so you know what's happening for me this week. I have a meeting with DF Development. Scott Carlington has asked to see me in terms of meeting with him and his planner. I don't, I'm not sure what it's about, but I'm gonna have a discussion with, with those guys. As I mentioned, I have a DEQ meeting this week to talk about the, the environmental review and what we need to do to mitigate. I have the.
Environmental review on what?
Oh, I'm sorry, so that's the DEQ. So that's the environmental review on the site for Goldust for the shop. I also have a meeting with Western Federal Lands on our FLAP grant for the Lake Shore project. And potentially gonna be kicking off here sometime, so we'll, I wanted to make sure that you guys are aware that I'll have an agreement somewhere along the way that will be before you in terms of executing that.
Is that this year, Dan, that we're supposed to go into construction or next year?
So it's 28 is when they had it scheduled. It's really, it takes a while for the design process to go through. And then if we have to do any purchasing of, of right, I don't think we do. This allows them more time. Now, when you're ready, when the design is ready, then they can maybe move you up in the schedule. It all depends on that.
Put an overlay on that last year of just a couple inches?
Yeah, just to essentially hold it together for the next couple of years until this project kicks in. I also have a meeting with Juan and Ken in regards to the Four Corners Grant. So this is one where, as you recall, I kind of got sideways and pulled the, pulled the grant. We're gonna sit down with Juan to discuss kind of the, the next steps forward, which I think will be a meeting with FEMA in regards to submitting what they need for that, for that application. And one other thing I wanted to mention, I set up a meeting with the gentleman on the Shaline Storage Site. Got it on Fridays to kind of walk through what he's thinking in terms of the site and see if there's a possibility. This is a potential purchase of, of land that we can include as storage and potentially equipment, storage, not only material storage, but equipment storage.
He said he, he wasn't, he didn't take he was wanting to sell that whole flat?
Not the whole thing. I don't think, he, he's pretty adamant about not selling the whole thing. I, I said, well, why don't you tell me what you're thinking and we'll go out and we'll kind of stake it out and just see if it fits.
If it works for you.
Yeah.
Once we have a little more knowledge, then we can reach back to Idaho Power too and see what they're thinking as far as, you know, their site. They're holding on us from doing anything else.
Okay.
They are doing that entire redo of the power lines through there. They are holding on us until we make a decision on this. And then we can come up with a sales value on it.
It's not currently in the budget, so it'll, we'll have to figure out how to do that.
In Jeff's budget?
I think that's Dan's budget, I actually saw there for.
It'll come out of his.
That would be a.
I'm sorry, one other thing. S Bridge. So. I need, we can't find the bridge plans. And I, I believe it might be at the BOR. If any of you know of a contact person.
Dave Bingeman has been working with the BOR.
Who's that?
Dave Bingeman.
Okay.
On a stretch, well, actually on that 90-degree around the other end, but he would have contact at BOR.
Okay.
Actually, the local guy here is probably where we should start with.
I, I, I called down to her office down in Boise, but I haven't heard back, so I thought. Because I think maybe they might have, you know, a set of plans.
That was built in 50s?
50s, 60s, something like that.
50s? 50s? Eight years, eight years after the dam was built?
I will see if I have a BOR contact. We got some contacts when they were working on the marina.
We met the young man, he was at, what was it?
I bet I have a card for him somewhere.
One of the meetings, he was a local guy.
Yeah, I've got a, I'm sure I have a business card for him somewhere. I'll find one for you in a second. That's a good idea too.
With that, I'm, I think I'm done.
Do you really think there were any plans when they did that back in the 60s? I think they went, oh, that works.
I was thinking they probably would. I'm thinking they probably would.
Oh, no.
ITD doesn't have them, so that kind of puts it.
Yeah, I, I was surprised that ITD didn't have a, a set. But then I thought, well, maybe.
Not ITDs though.
Before I was born. Oh, what?
40s?
Hey, hey. Okay, maybe I don't.
No respect.
Thank you. Jeff, what do you have for us?
Wow, look at the, you got a, got a new jacket?
I was told to throw my other one away because it was falling apart, so.
It was smelling, it was smelling like gasoline.
Good call.
Spilled gas on it after I spent 12 hours in road grader, just wasn't thinking and. Kind of all over the place.
You guys don't smoke, Jeff.
Yeah, exactly. Welcome aboard, Callan.
Thank you.
Just real quick, had a new hire two weeks ago. So he'll be working out of Lake Fork Shop. He's coming with some experience. Sounds like we might be able to do a swap trade thing. He, he wants to do it. He loves spraying weeds, he loves the math, he loves, he's done this for Nampa Highway District for quite a few years. Went private industry for a few years, wants his Percy back, so we, we got him.
Nice.
Lives down there between New Meadows and Council somewhere. It still puts him within his 30 minutes to the shop. So he'll be taking over the plow route outside of McCall, which will move James, my supervisor, down to Donley area, which in turn will put me back in Clear Creek. We're still short, but we're one less person short.
That's awesome. Good news.
Other than that, every time it warms and rains up, we're having to patch West Roseberry out by Hawks Bay, all the way to Tamarack. Dan's got plans for all this other stuff, so. Just what we're doing, we're cutting brush, we're patching, working on equipment. February is gonna kick our butts and be prepared.
Sent an email, I'm coming back from Boise, 3:00 to 3:30 on Wednesday, so we can sit down and visit. I really think, I am very concerned about the SRS funding not coming through. So I think we're gonna have to start a conversation with the community about a road levy and figure out a long-term funding source for this. And maybe we just do two years to see if we get SRS back, you know, then we could drop that. Well, that's something we're all gonna have to start thinking about is how are we gonna fund our road department? Because the feds are not upholding their end of the bargain with what they've committed.
So what's more viable, levy or a highway district?
We can have that conversation, but that's longer than we have today. But a highway district, they all have to buy all their own equipment. They have their own boards, they have their own supervisors. It's very expensive for the citizens. And we already have the equipment, we already, you know, we are the board. So there's a lot of additional expenses when you do a road district.
Yeah, they'll basically have to come in and buy all of our equipment, all of our buildings, pay for their own commissioners, pay for their own lawyers.
Just like the AMS.
They, they can literally fire every one of us at the road department, make us reapply.
Well, and that's if you get road districts that cover the entire county.
Highway districts, yeah.
If not, or highway districts. Because then if not, we have to take care of the stuff that's unincorporated into a district. So I, you know.
Thing with the highway district, what I understood from seven years ago or eight years ago is taxpayers pay, city McCall gets chunked, Donley gets chunked, Cascade gets chunked, we get what's left over.
We are gonna have to have conversations over how we're gonna fund until we know one way or another what's happening in Washington. Because right now, there, I mean, even if we get it for now, we may get it this year, we may not. It may kick us a year out, but they are not doing anything for long-term solutions.
Right.
These are all short-term funding solutions. So we are gonna have to start thinking about how we do it ourselves. I don't know about you guys, but I'm tired of getting the emails. People are really getting frustrated with the condition of our roads. We have to find a longer-term solution.
Yep, and the thing is, SRS is not guaranteed. Levy's short-term. We gotta get something that we can budget off of.
Exactly.
Because right now, we sit in Doug's office and guess. It's like, well, let's go ahead and budget for this, and if we don't get this, then we'll wipe this off. And it's really hard to budget off of something that's not guaranteed.
Levy's a Band-Aid, that's why I just thrown out different ideas.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, up next on our agenda is the meeting minutes of January 6th. I did send in a correction to Doug. We missed a little bit of a conversation. Did you get that, Doug?
I did not, Madam Chairman.
Okay. There is a, during the Valley Soil and Water District, Leonard Long had done a long participation in that conversation, and we didn't document that. So we might just want to document that in those minutes. I don't know if you guys heard, if you saw anything, Neil?
I didn't, I'm, I'm good with it though.
Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of January 6th with the addition of Leonard Long's.
I'll go ahead and second it since Catlin didn't see them. It's been moved in seconded, all in favor of the meeting minutes of January 6th?
Aye.
I will show that you abstained. Okay, please. And then the next, let's see.
Orstad Professional Services.
This is on the Amerititle Building. So I put this on there and then we kind of did a little go-around, so I think we're still okay to approve this. So instead of doing a separate MOU with Erstad for the construction drawings, this is the construction drawings where the Amerititle changed, then I reached out to the Clearwater Financial. We already have an MOU with, with Clearwater. So I've asked them to incorporate this into their bid and then just send us a short addendum stating that we will go ahead and. and then just send us a short addendum stating that we will go ahead and, uh, pay this expense. So.
Is this Urstad, is that part of Cameron's company?
This is a subcontractor for them.
For them, okay.
Yes.
I'd like to figure out.
It will be under. But they didn't have any idea what the construction cost would be, the drawing cost would be. But this gives us the final plans in order to move forward and, uh.
From all those drawings.
From all those drawings, yeah. And then we can go ahead and get a bid. So they will also help with all of that. So if you guys are in favor, then they will go ahead and roll up. It will be this expense plus whatever their fee is to do it. So I don't know if you want to wait a week. We can get an actual total. But then we lose a week as far as the timing for the construction drawings.
Well, yeah, they need to get their drawings put to bed and get them there. Cause this is fixing to happen.
Yeah, we've got to get moving. We're way behind the eight ball on timing to get all of this done. So just clarify for me, um, so Clearwater did the drawings of how it's going to be laid out. And then they have to subcontract for what it's going to cost to build, like, let's say the cube, the cold and things.
All.
What they did is they worked with us to meet with every one of our divisions that will be down there to find out their needs. And then they did a basic drawing for basic layout. And now they actually have to have the architect come up and walk through the building, get all of the actual measurements and do construction plans. And then those construction plans can go out. Uh, Clearwater will take those out to bid. So then we will actually know the costs. I was shocked about the amount of the cost that came back. So I talked to Cameron about that. He told me that he felt like the bid was very high. They use some kind of software that will predetermine a little bit on, you know, what the expense is going to be. He think, well, there was a ninety thousand dollar line item in there, you know, for their contingency line item. So he thinks that's way over a contingency of price. And he thinks that there were some additional costs in there he did not agree with, so he thinks that bid's going to be very high. I'm praying that it's lower than that because we're going to be using some of our savings account if not, to get all this done.
Well, you know, it's a lot of that, I mean, the whole cost of the whole thing. I wouldn't think it'd be over fifty thousand dollars, but I might be wrong. I mean, you're just building a few walls and shoot rock and, I mean, you.
We got a five hundred thousand dollar cost on there.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, I, I thought it was, I thought it cost a couple hundred.
I think we get a hold of the same guy we had do the, uh, building down there at Fairgrounds, I say.
We've got to have it bid. So we'll have them bid it too and see what the actual cost is, but we've got to have these plans in order to do that. So if you guys are okay with moving forward with this, then I would entertain that motion. Do, do you have an idea of what their fees are going to be? I don't. He said a small fee just to run it through them and. Like if it's a thousand dollars, that's one thing. If it's a larger fee than that.
It's just, it's just paperwork right now. It's just.
It's just to run this through there. He said there was a little bit of a liability expense on their behalf, but don't we have some, some leftover funds too? Miller about, um, on their annual, I mean, we just, we appropriated so much money for them to work with us. I mean, could we use a portion of that?
That would be a decision by Clearwater if you're asking about our retainment fee that we paid Clearwater. Yes, we could ask them if they can utilize some of that fee for this matter, but that would be a decision.
Okay. I'll ask Cameron on that.
Cause this is looking at nineteen.
Kellin, if you'd like, we can wait. I mean, it's just going to cost us a week. I'd like to get these things started, but.
This is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
The construction. I, I mean, a ten percent could be two thousand. That's what I would anticipate it being, but.
I mean, I'd, I'd be okay with that. Uh, Cameron's always done right by us. Actual, yeah. Austin doing the work, that's going to be something we're going to have to get bids and, you know, put that to bed. I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Kellin. I'd like to at least know this number.
Well, let's wait then. We can wait until next week. It's.
Let's, let's do that. Let's wait till next week.
Let's table it.
Get us something fixed a little tighter.
We can do that. And we'll reach out to him and let him know that we're waiting on that proposal, so. Right, and that is the end of our, oh, nope, it's not either. Okay, the next up is on the discussion of our appointments of commissioners to committees, divisions and specific boards. So I did send both of you, I think anyway. I better resend it right now. I did a new commissioner or board responsibility. And Doug, you know what? Well, let's see, can I reach that H D on my cord still? I don't know if I can still reach that cord. In your email, I am going to send right now that form. I don't believe that I received that. I, I did receive the one you sent, you had sent my personal email several months ago, but I updated that. And what I updated on it also, I added an extra tab that actually shows the divisions that each one of us lead. And then maybe Neil and I can do a little bit of an update with you on, you know, kind of what we find that these boards, you know, kind of um, what these boards entail, how much time that we're discussing it with.
Thousands of hours.
Feels like it some days. I worked all weekend long, so. So this did not gold collaborative. Well, I'll wait till you guys, okay, you've got that one. Neil, I should have just come in to give you two for the new one, but the Stednite Gold Collaborative is going to be over with. I mean, I, however, as we move forward there, I mean, there may be meetings here and there, but now that they have their record of decision, that should be pretty small, so I'll keep that one. I've already been sitting on that one. The Payette Forest Coalition. I think the Payette and the Boise Forest Coalition should be the same. And we haven't really talked about what our backgrounds are and where we want to focus. I will start, since I've only got two years left, this year I need to complete my responsibilities on the Public Lands Committee for Idaho Association of Counties, which means that I need to touch things still that are natural resource-based. Um, I don't think that the coalitions necessarily needs to be me. I think that is a good way to get your feet wet on what's happening.
And not happening.
Yeah. Well, the coalitions actually, they're doing a pretty good job.
If they would work, they don't work real well. I, I feel like we just get lip service with those folks and it's really, it's really frustrating. I mean, Larry, he gets so frustrated with them because they just uh-huh, uh-huh, and then you walk out and you feel like they don't care. And that, that really bothers me. I mean, I, I just feel like, okay, if we're going to really have a coalition here and you're going to work with the county and we're going to work with you guys, it's going to be a two-way street and it always feels like it's one-way street. And everybody in there feels the same way. It's like, we need this, we need this, uh-huh, uh-huh, and you know.
I was pretty impressed with the B F C on Thursday. I have not sat in on one before, so I don't know what the P F C's doing. It might be who's leading them.
That's the problem. Have nobody leading it.
And nobody from Valley, yeah.
Doing it.
Valley County's forestry was not on the Boise Forest Coalition call. Larry says he keeps reaching out to Chris and he isn't there, so. But so this is something that somebody really needs to take these. I mean, these collaborations can be a great way to get things done. But they are during the day, Neil. I don't know your schedule. I don't know Kellin's schedule. A lot of these things, we can talk about what's during the day and what are, you know, evening meetings.
There's two of them in the middle of the day and that's Payette Forest Coalition, Boise Forest Coalition. Winter rec meeting, dead in the middle of the day. Waterways, Waterways is at nine in the morning on Tuesdays. I've made about half those.
Economic Development's in the middle of the day, E M S, L A P C's in the middle of the day. I mean, there's, there's quite a lot that are in the middle of the day. I don't know your guys' schedules, but some of these are more critical than others. That we make sure at least get there quarterly or some, you know, some kind of a communication tool.
I'd be very interested in sitting on the Payette Forest Coalition. And I'm available most Thursdays during the day. Um, the only days that are really up for me during the day are Tuesdays.
Economic Development Council Day. Oh, okay, so that's all day for you?
Essentially during the summer months for sure from.
I may have to stay on that one.
April through November. I'm really trying to keep that, to keep one day that we're, um, so I can commit as much time as I can the other four days of the week, but Tuesday really is one that I have to keep.
I will leave myself on the Economic Development Council then, because that's, that's a really important one.
Tuesdays are my, uh, my Monday, so Tuesdays are real tough for me.
So winter, well, okay, well, let's talk about the other one then, the Boise Forest Coalition. Do you want to take that one then also?
Sure. Those are on the same Thursday every?
No, I think.
They're just every other month.
But I did it on Zoom, so they do have a hybrid meeting where you can do both. All right, so Neil, do you want to keep the winter rec? I think that the winter rec and the Parks and Rec Oversight, I, you know, have you found that those two things kind of touch each other and that you're the same person?
Winter rec, Parks and Rec, Snowville, you know.
Advisory.
Advisory Board that I'm on. And of course, the Recreation Committee that I'm on.
So do you want to keep rec then?
Intermix. I can stay on all that. I, I enjoy that, that piece.
And I will keep the E D C. I would really like to take on the E M S, the L A P C. That is our All-Hazard Mitigation Plan and a lot of that type of work. And I would like to be involved in that. That's actually why I got on the commission to start with five years ago. And I still haven't been able to attend because El was on that one, so I will put that one under me. Central District Health. So the Central District Health Board, we've kind of talked about a little bit. El is willing to stay on it if we delegate him to be our person, but Kellin, he wanted to know about your interest in that before he made that commitment.
I'm definitely interested. Do you know what days they meet every other month in Boise?
I think it's on a Friday. If I remember right, didn't he go down on Fridays?
I believe so, Madam Chairman.
I think so too. I think it's about, you know, I mean, it's about health in our community. And I A C is asking that it be county commissioners. So, you know, we, we could delegate if you weren't interested, but if you are interested, I think that would be appropriate to do that.
I am. That is something I would be willing to do.
Be good, because I've had a few people reach out to me about getting on the board and it's like, I don't know.
Unless you wanted to do it, Neil.
Yes, I think it'd be one of us. If you're interested in that, it doesn't matter to me. I think it'd be important one of us be involved with that.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, uh, that, uh, calendar is usually sent out by the Central District Health in February. I'm just checking in. Last year it was sent out at the end of February, providing them, uh, providing those on the board with a calendar, so I would anticipate that that is going to be submitted by Donna Meehan. I can reach out to her. She is the Assistant to the Central District Health Director. Uh, so I can reach, reach out to her to find out when that calendar is going to be submitted, so you guys will have that for review.
Isn't it okay if I look at their last year's?
Yeah, absolutely. I can forward it to you if you'd like.
That'd be great. It looks like that would be do, doable for me. Okay. And Clark, if you would also ask how we make that change as the appointment for Valley County?
Absolutely.
That would be great. Okay.
So there's.
I'll reach back to El.
Our Central District Health, is that like District Three?
We're District Three, yeah.
Jeff, you want to.
Thank you for that.
Make sure you don't overload yourself.
I'm at three. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to go too many more than that for my first year. Not close yet, so. The Fair Board, so this is a lot, oh, let's see, I'm, I need to go back up. Southwest Resources and Conservation Board, this is a one that the grant writer's actually been serving for us because it's down in Boise. It actually involves us in the fact that we can get some grants and we do a little tiny bit of funding with them. But they're like, um, our Valley County Soil and District, wherever, I can never remember their name. Soil, yeah. So it's more a horseshoe band and that kind of thing, but they do have some funding, so we've asked for grant writers to attend those. I don't, you know, if you guys are still okay with that, I think.
That seems appropriate.
It's much more important that we get somebody to attend the Valley Soil and Water. We have not had anybody attending that now for quite some time. It is monthly. It is the first Thursday of every month. And I think it's pretty critical that we start doing that. There is a Zoom link, so.
This is on the Southwest concert?
This one's on the Valley Soil and Water. Oh, I hopped down to the bottom, but sorry, we can get there when we get there.
That's the people that were here that day, yeah.
And their meetings are, you said every?
It's the first Thursday of every month. Or no, I take that back. It's the second Thursday. No, first Thursday.
During the day?
Yes, during the morning. They start at nine. They do give you a, a link. Man, I'm happy to sit on that one also. That one would be one I could probably take. Let's do these other ones first, because there is a couple in here that we need to do. The, the Fair Board. I've done that one in the past. I'm not interested in serving on the Fair Board.
I like the Fair Board. I'm, I just, I'm staying with them.
Okay, and I think, Kellin, you may have some conflict there.
Oh, I just think as a prior forehater leader, it would be good to distance myself for a year or so. So I think it's great if Commissioner Thompson would like to stay on that.
That's great. Community Gardens is one that they don't meet very often.
Is it Guardians or Gardens?
Guardians.
Okay.
It is those indigent, uh, individuals in our community that need some, uh, community support. Doug, do you know, I don't think it needs to be the chairman on that one. It can be any of us.
I believe so.
Okay. It's, it's regarding really, it's about those that, um, don't have appropriate supports, most particularly our seniors.
Take that. That'd be great.
It's, it's a light lift, I believe.
Did we know anything about our senior center yet? Got anything dialed in before he left?
I think the last update on your guys' commission meeting was she was going to be on for a while and it was cotton hold, correct?
It is. More to follow on that. Thought we probably should do another workshop on that one here.
Oh, yeah.
The Waterways Advisory Committee, that is on Tuesday mornings.
You know, I'll stay with that. It, it's, when things are running smoothly, I can usually do that one. It's been a rough year.
The Land Allocation Committee.
What is that?
That, I, I think maybe they used to call it something different. I don't know what the Land Allocation Committee is. I think that All Lands Fireworking one. Right now I oversee Mara's division and I would like to be involved in that one. So I could take that one in the fireworking group and just keep that whole thing together with that division that Mara oversees.
So like the meeting on Wednesday, you would normally attend that?
Normally attend that.
Okay, that's fine.
The one that she was talking about that I was wanting to be involved with. What was that one? It covered, it covered Adams County, Valley and, uh, Boise County?
So that's the All Lands. I think that's the, what she just called All Lands Fireworking, because that's going to be the N F F. That's going to be the National Forest Foundation coming in and where is that mitigation work going to happen?
Right, but that's not the Land Allocation Committee. That's something else.
I, you know, Doug, do you know what the land allocation it was supposed to be? I actually had you on there, Neil.
I apologize. I, I've done more research, but it's not familiar to me.
It's not familiar to me either. We're gonna, we're just gonna leave that one right now with a question mark behind it.
Yeah, I've never heard it. Nobody just reaches out and.
I mean, if anything, it would probably be Juan that would have been in charge of that one. The Snowmobile Advisory, Neil, you'll stay on. The Valley Soil and Water then. Right now what they are doing is that wastewater. So I don't know if you want to take that one and engage at least, you know, with the wastewater stuff. The reason that I feel like we need somebody there, they've been a lot more engaged in commenting on all of our planning and zoning. You know, stuff. They have had numerous conversations with keeping them in their lane and what their, you know, responsibilities are. It is a Zoom call, so you don't have to go to an actual meeting. If you're willing to take that one, but if not.
I can take it. They're good people.
Mostly, they're really good.
Just as an observer, right? I mean, we can have some county input.
So they do receive funding through us?
Yes.
Well, we, we give them an office, we give them some paper products and supplies.
There's also a cash contribution as well.
So we are part of that map.
Sorry to interrupt your mentor.
They're good folks.
Yeah.
They can get sidetracked a little bit on.
Do that knowing that it may conflict with maybe, was it the Boise Forest Coalition? And if you didn't get to every meeting, that would probably be fine, too, but as long as we keep our feet in there. And I think you would be a good fit because a lot of it's agricultural based.
Oh, definitely.
And that's what El was, you know, he knew far more about them than I do, just because a lot of the work they do is for the agricultural community.
And that fits with the, that's not listed on this list, but the South Lakes that I've been sitting in on. You may want to add that to the list.
That's kind of a subcommittee of what they're doing?
True.
Okay, so that, let's make sure we're a little balanced, but.
Your National Forest and Counties and Schools Coalition, what is that? I don't even know if that's.
That's mine.
That yours? Do they actually?
We are totally balanced on our community boards. So the National Forest and Schools meets during legislative session. That's how we're trying to get SRS done and our PILT funding. So it is a separate group that meets that school districts and counties within the Western Coalition that actually discusses how we contact our congressional delegation and how we keep the conversation going about SRS and PILT. So it's a lot of work about sending letters to our congressional delegation, that type of thing. I always bring them here if it's something that the county needs to send versus just me personally sending a letter. But that's what that is, so someday, somebody else can take that one on.
You're finished this year, that'd be something that I'd be interested in.
And you can engage in that one this year if you would like. I mean, that's.
If I can.
That just kind of gets your.
Be what?
And you know what, what the whole conversation is. You and I can maybe kind of work together on some of that this year. All right, so then, so the Recreation, Neil, you're still on that one.
Yep.
Recycling Group is not meeting at this time. The Pathways Collaborative Group is not meeting this time. Waterways Coalition, I've already got you on there. I don't know why that's on there twice, so I'm going to take that one off. Within, I think I have these correct, within the Idaho Association of Counties, you're doing infrastructure, that one. Neil, you're doing intergovernmental. That one will be a new one for you this year.
Yep.
Stepping back off that one, I'm doing the public lands, justice.
We can sit in on those, right? If they don't.
If they're not conflict. Yep, absolutely. You just don't have a vote when you get there, but yeah. So justice and public safety, Neil, we've got you down on that one. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, revenue and taxes, Catlin, legislative is mine. The NACO Committee, that's again, probably just that national step up top. I don't know why I have that on there twice either, I'll take that one off. All-Hazard Mitigation, that's the one that is from the LEPC and that type of thing, so I'll just leave that on there for mine. Uad advisory, the UVI Advisory Board. So Catlin, just for you, this, Melissa has an annual conference aboard that comes together and discusses what UVI should be doing in Valley County, what things we would like her to highlight. Neil, you haven't made that one yet. I waited on the last one. Either I can stay on that one. It has a little bit to do with 4H and that type of thing. So if you want to remain on that one, that's great. It is a, it's about a two or three hour call, but it's once a year. So it's not a huge commitment, but it does talk about, you know, what we want to see UVI Extension focused on in Valley County. So it is a large responsibility, if you will, to make sure that they are, that they are performing work in this county that's important to the.
I guess I don't have my heart in that one. Yeah, honest.
I do, I would do that.
That would be great.
Yeah, I just.
So in that situation, I'm going to put you on Oversight of UVI for one of your divisions.
Okay.
I know that Melissa will be very appreciative of that. And when, this year I did Melissa's evaluation. We had never sat down with her before and we'll explain the process, but we are adding her to our round of Division Leads and their coaching sessions and their annual evaluations here, so we can kind of inform a little bit more on what hers will be.
We do that on all the, just department heads, isn't it?
VCor. I started out with VCor. I became way overwhelmed with way too many responsibilities and I've stepped away from that. The opioid response is, DeeDee Phillips actually is actively engaged in that. They are the group that gets together and discusses how we mitigate substance abuse, most particularly opioids in this, in Valley County. They have been responsible for working with Ignite and really getting Ignite going. It's an excellent board, talks about public health a little bit, it talks about, but most importantly is how do we build programming in Valley County to support those most in need that have substance abuse? And it is an important board. I just have not had time and it was outside of what my scope, kind of what I'm focused on. So I don't know if you guys, you know, either one of you want to at least take one meeting and see if it's something that you would like to engage with?
How long are they and when are they?
I think they're once a month. And if I remember right, they kept them pretty much to an hour, so it wasn't a huge ask.
Do we know what day?
I do not know what day. If you'd like to reach out to DeeDee Phillips and get a little bit more.
Next meeting is, yeah, Madam Chairman, I apologize again. The next meeting is tomorrow. It's an hour and a half long meeting. I can forward it on to you, but yes, I would encourage you to reach out to DeeDee Phillips. She can provide you with a little bit more information on the frequency of the meetings. It looks like it is once a month. And the next one is February 11th, so let me forward this on.
Connect with part of the Health and Welfare, I mean, is it?
Health and Welfare actually staffs this committee. So they actually got a $500,000 grant from Health and Welfare three years ago, four years ago now. It's a five-year grant in order to do this work up here. Valley County has a very strong system in place.
Yep.
Much more so than a lot of other counties because of that Health and Welfare grant.
That might be something that'd be more in your realm when it deals with the Health and Welfare.
So you said that DeeDee attends these meetings, so if we're unable, then she gets. Then we have a presence?
Oh, yeah. And Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I also attend, not as frequently, but I do participate as well.
And we do do funding for these guys and that's why it's kind of a little bit critical, but if you want to attend one, you see if it's your thing and if not, let me know and we'll try and get that into my schedule again.
Gee, sharp, sharp little gal.
Yeah. I also sit on the State Natural Resource Mitigation, or IAC's Natural Resource Mitigation Fund. I'm also on a public lands board for the state, separate than Idaho Association of Counties. El was put on the Roadless Rules Commission. I reached out to Seth and he said that without leaving that either the governor will ask for a new representation or IAC will, so we don't have to fill those at this time. The magistrate commission, I do, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, that's also an automatic appointment of the chairperson.
And Roadless Rules are magistrate?
Magistrate.
Yep, okay.
So that's an automatic chairperson appointment. If Madam Chairman is unable to participate, we can reach out to the trial court administrator as well as the administrative district judge to see if there's a possibility of a different appointment.
That's fine, I will take that one.
Okay.
And then in-house committees, and I really encourage us to think these through. I want to tell you what each one of these does. The Strategic Planning Committee actually started four years ago, five years ago when they started. And we actually set the vision for the county. And then as, as part of this, Gabby is running this now, but as part of it, we broke down all of the objectives for the county to meet our strategic goals. So there's a goal and I will send this plan to you guys, you can take a look at it. So there's a goal, like, right now, the one that's really high on my radar is, first of all, housing, create housing to create sustainability for our employee workforce. But the second one is maintaining our employees when the mine is approved. And so we've talked a lot about, you know, just, it's a brainstorming session for everybody here as far as what we can do to try and make sure that our employees are happy at work and are motivated to stay with us. And then we've talked a lot about maybe incentivizing some part-time people. June's still with us in the assessor's office. She didn't want to retire fully, so maybe those that are in retirement might want to come back and participate on a part-time level if they're needed. So this meets, well, usually we meet monthly. Sometimes it's every other month, every third month, but it's strategically planning for the future of Valley County. We've done a lot of work on this with IT. Cybersecurity is at risk, you know, how are we going to utilize AI in the county, those types of things? So it's a great time, all of the electeds come or send someone from the electeds divisions and then our, our division directors all come. So it's a great time to just sit and talk about visionary things for the Valley County. The Campus Planning Committee has been the one that has been involved with Clearwater. We did a full-on plan a year ago, two years ago about, yes, about what the county campus is going to look like. That one's going to go on hold because of the mayor title purchase. But that committee also had done a lot of work on the road relocation, the road department relocation. That Campus Planning Committee will probably do a lot of work on the fairgrounds and how we are going to create that venue for the fairgrounds. The CIP Committee is a committee that talks about the budget for the county. We implemented this, gosh, Doug, four years ago. And anything that's over $25,000 purchase amount has to go through the CIP Committee. And what that does is it takes a look at what all of our needs are throughout the county, figures out what the funding, the funding source is for that, and then it has to be approved so that we don't have everybody doing their own thing within their own budgets and we aren't prioritizing what's most important for the county at large.
We got, I mean, we got a lot on our plate. Gold dust, mayor title. There's a lot of stuff floating, finishing up the, you know, the fairgrounds. There's a lot of money used from ARPA and it's still floating that we're trying to be nice when all this settles out.
I remember watching that on YouTube, I believe Johanna presented it.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of it is, is the Sheriff's Department really need three new vehicles a year. And that's what we have right now for them. Every year we buy three new vehicles and they provide their, their reasoning behind that. Jeff comes in and, I don't know, Dan or Jeff will do it this year, but they provide the reasoning that they need the new equipment that they're going to be purchasing. That's how we approved the jail van last year. We prioritized it over some other things because that was really critical that they get a new jail van. Scott is on it and he actually breaks down the types of upgrades that he needs. And so we look at those funding sources and just determine what's necessary.
Looks like we have, I think they bought that big up armored vehicle or something several years ago, just before I got on here.
The what?
Armored vehicle of some sort. I actually purchased that.
Chairman, Commissioner Thompson, that was a grant that was applied for, but we were not awarded that grant.
We didn't get it awarded.
We did not.
So that doesn't happen.
That's correct, that, that piece of equipment was not purchased.
I couldn't remember.
SWAT team.
Yeah.
Now that you're saying that, we had something on SWAT team. And then the Resource Management Planning, that one is, I'm going to keep that one just because the Resource Management Plan for the county is in its infancy. I've started this conversation, so I brought it to this point and I want to continue that on.
You want to stay on the Campus Planning Committee?
I don't care. I'm open to anything else. I think that you guys need to learn these other committees anyway before I'm gone in two years.
I wouldn't mind being on the Campus Planning Committee. I mean, it's going to kind of scope out to the fairgrounds here, you know, road department, all of it. That one I wouldn't mind being involved in.
Ellen, do you have one next?
I will do the CIP. As a backup to Neil, because I would like to have some input on the future fairgrounds setup. Just to let both of you know, I do have that RFQ ready to go out. I don't know if it'd be back from you, but I did up a request for proposal on that.
When you're asking.
Remember the Fair Board, if they had any input.
We have a jet that we're supposed to meet, or Wednesday, supposed to meet on the 15th. I haven't heard from them yet, but I think we're supposed to meet on the 15th. Because I need to ask them a little bit. I don't know if they have a future idea or if they have any.
So this is just a proposal to bring us some ideas. And so they might want to be more engaged when we actually have, you know, kind of a proposal in place in front of us, but I didn't want to do it without them.
Sure.
At the same time, we got to get this moving. The Fair, UVI Fair, Allison has taken a look at it. She's got some people that are very interested in doing like a community meeting and that will be the next part of that process is once we get some ideas, we do need to create a citizens group to come together and look at the plans and, yeah, that's what we want, that's what we don't want. If we do it as that work session in here, then you both can attend and we can all have input into that, so. Okay. All right, so now the Division Oversight. So I currently have IT, Planning and Zoning, Wildfire Mitigation, and HR. I definitely want to keep Wildfire Mitigation. Neil, you're on Parks and Rec, Buildings and Grounds, I've taken you off the UVI. And then Catlin currently, and El had the Building Department, the Road Department, Court Services, and UVI. Neil, you talked about wanting Road Department. Are you okay with him on the Road Department?
Sure.
Let's talk about what Oversight means for a minute. So we all three manage the divisions. However, they really need at times just somebody to bounce ideas off of. They need to let somebody know when they're on vacation, if they have issues within their departments. If we start having problems between departments, then they are to come to us first and we as elected officials will go and talk to each other about the problems going on in those departments and/or going to another elected official if it's theirs that we're having concerns with. We do coaching with them. All three of us do the coaching, so you will be getting from HR a fillable form. So when you get your feet wet a little bit more, you'll be able to help with some oversight. He usually gives us a few days to get back to him. So then we just use those for coaching and then we do an annual performance evaluation based upon those coachings. We're doing coachings twice a year now, so really a coaching session, then we go right into their annual review. So these are really ones that if they have a need, they need to be able to get ahold of you on your cell phone right away. This is an emergency, my department, this is what I need to talk to you about. So, and if there is a concern or something that is raised, you're the one that goes to them and talks to them about the concerns that you've heard. So that being said.
I, I use my phone. I don't have a, I don't have a.
Jeremy has a phone that's getting set up for me for.
I didn't want one, I tried it and it was like, I'll stay here, so.
Well, I'm happy to stay with what I have. If you guys.
And these are decided each year?
Yeah. Neil, you've got Parks and Rec and the Road Department based upon your stuff, Buildings and Grounds.
Got Scott, Dan, Road Department, and Larry with Rec Department.
Catlin, do you want, you just came off P and Z. I mean, if you can take P and Z, I'm happy to stay on that one. Building Department's pretty easy.
I think it's probably reasonable to keep. I think it's probably reasonable to keep building and P and Z together. Um, I know they do a lot of stuff correlated together, so I would be fine taking P and Z.
And I will take Court Services since it's in McCall and I can run over and spend a little more time with.
Makes sense.
Okay. So I will take Court Services.
Yeah, we're going to have a lot of turnover. We just leave in September. Scott's leaving September. DeeDee's two years? Two years, three years, something like that?
She hasn't given us an actual date yet.
We keep telling her ten.
Gets her role of.
I think she's going to last that long.
She gets her retirement at, what is it, Rule of 80 or Rule of 90 or whatever she's at, so she'll have that, but she has not said if she's leaving us, so.
She just came on, what, the first year? First and last year is when she came on.
Something like that. I can't remember the timing to be honest with you. Okay, I'm going to send this back out to everybody and then I will do up a, um, memo to the, our divisions and tell them who is over them. All right, that is all for our morning session for January 13th, so we will, um, close the meeting.